I'd like to call the meeting to order. Going to start out with the invocation from Trustee Stone Cypher.
Please stand. Lord, we thank you once again for bringing us all together here today. I ask that you would give us guidance and wisdom as we look over all these very important things on the agenda today, that we move into this new fiscal year 2223 with a sense of energy and excitement. I thank you for those that have helped to develop our budget, from finance, accounting, to all the administrators and faculty who have helped put us on the path to success over this next year. We thank you so much for those who serve this institution, for the students we have, that we can make a difference in their lives, for those in Pinellas County. We ask for your guidance today, and it's your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up, we have a presentation of retirement resolutions.
All right. First up will be Charlotte Johns Rich. All the financial aid and other family members, join us. So before I read this, there are two individuals up here with me today that helped me start my first job at St. Petersburg College. Ms. Jean Corey was my first boss back in 1986, '87, and Ms. Charlotte Johns was my second boss.[164.51][164.51](Laughter).[165.51][165.51](Applause). So I'm going to try not to cry because you guys know all about what I did back then. Okay.[175.31][175.31](Laughter). Resolution. Whereas Charlotte Johns Rich, Assistant Director of Financial Assistance Services on the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus, began her career at St. Petersburg College in 1984 as an accounting specialist in the district office. And whereas Ms. Johns Rich moved to the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus in 1985, serving students as a financial aid advisor and later as Assistant Director of Financial Assistance Services until 1997, when she left our college, bad move, to serve as Director of Financial Aid at Pasco Hernando and later Hillsborough Community Colleges. And whereas Ms. Johns Rich intended to retire in 2010, but it would not be so. When asked to consider to return to Financial Assistance Services Department at St. Petersburg College, she acquiesced, acquiesced, and as a result, has served SPC for another 12 years on the Midtown and Downtown campuses, and most recently, back at the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus. Whereas Ms. Johns Rich always has had a genuine, passionate, and motherly concern for the well-being of her students, a team-worked, oriented, and collaborative approach with her colleagues, and a love and respect for our college, which she has faithfully served with dignity, professionalism, and hard work through the years. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Charlotte Johns Rich, and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution been adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 21st day of June 2022. Ms. Charlotte Johns Rich.
Thank you so much.[294.83][294.83](Applause). Thank you. Oh, you're giving me the mic?[305.14][305.14](Laughter). Oh, I know. Okay, they say I'm like Michael Jackson. I don't dance, but I can talk. Good morning, everyone. I want to thank everyone. It is such an honor to have this recognition. I'm trying not to cry because so many of you are very, very close to my heart. I want to thank the Financial Assistance Services, the St. P Gibbs Student Services, my colleagues from the downtown, midtown, all around town, for affording me the opportunity to be a part of your work, family. I appreciate the trust and the support that you've displayed in my ability to serve as the Assistant Director of Financial Assistance Services. These past 12 years back to St. Petersburg College were indeed inspiring, enriching, and memorable. I enjoyed working at all these locations, but most of all, I enjoyed seeing the students again. Most of them had asked me, "Where you been, Ms. Charlotte?" I said, "Oh, Hillsborough Community College scooped me up for 10 years, and Pasco got me for 12, but I am back." They said, "Oh, we're so glad to see you." I said, "I'm so glad to be back at SPC." So what an amazing journey. I was blessed to have, to travel. I love working in Financial Assistance Services because as most of you know, it's my passion and the career of helping others acquire their educational dreams and building of a relationship. Thus, my heart is so full. I will certainly miss the college staff and most of all, my friends.[403.03][403.03](Sighs). I know. My commitment of helping others will continue, for this is what brings joy to our lives. It is so hard to say goodbye to yesterday. Boy, some men.[419.21][419.21](Laughter). My gratitude is enormous, and my thoughts will always be with the FAS family, SPC, our president, my colleagues, and our student body. I'm not gone. I'll just be visiting here now and then, but I will always be around to be there for anyone who needs me. God bless you all. I still got a few more days at SPC till 30th of June, so I'll be here.[450.12][450.12](Laughter). They're just going to stay.[452.12][452.12](Laughter).
Maesel is also with financial aid, and so the whole family's staying up here with us. Said resolution. Whereas Maesel Paulette, Financial Assistance Counselor of Verification, will retire on June 30th, 2022, after completing 14 years of outstanding service at St. Petersburg College. And whereas Ms. Paulette began her esteemed career at St. Petersburg College in 2008 as Verification Officer, she had previously received her Associate in Science degree in accounting in 1986, and a Bachelor of Science in Organizational Management at Covenant College in Georgia in 2002. Whereas Ms. Paulette's genuine concern for the well-being of the college, its students and employees earned her their friendship, admiration, and respect as they witnessed her dedication, enthusiasm, professionalism, sense of humor, and hard work. And whereas Ms. Paulette's colleagues take great pleasure in recognizing her significant personal achievements and express heartfelt appreciation for the invaluable services she has contributed to St. Petersburg College over the years. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Maesel Paulette, and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 21st day of June 2022. Maesel.
Thank you.[577.35][577.35](Applause). I just want to thank everyone for their time and their friendship through the years. I enjoyed my time here at St. Petersburg College, and I will never forget all the things that have been done. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.[603.04][603.04](Applause). Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Reverend Dr. Stephen Sinclair. You guys can clap.[623.48][623.48](Applause). How are you today?
I'm great.
Good. Said resolution. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Stephen Sinclair began his St. Petersburg College career in 2009 as a professor of world religions on the Seminole campus. And whereas Dr. Sinclair proved to be a dedicated student advisor and mentor, as well as a popular and scholarly educator, his classes included conversations about life, which always were stimulating and optimistic. And whereas Dr. Sinclair spent many volunteer hours tutoring students in the Learning Support Commons, in addition, he served many years as advisor to the Inner Varsity Club. Whereas Dr. Sinclair welcomed priests, rabbis, church deacons, monks, and mullahs to the classroom, which added greatly to discussions and presentations of religious beliefs and traditions. In addition, he embarked on multiple trips to India with his students exposing them to India's rich culture and religious practices. And whereas Dr. Sinclair has served as Assistant Pastor at the Church of Christ, the King Presbyterian Church in Seminole, he has invested in his community by helping raise thousands of dollars for a crisis pregnancy center. An expert in religious pictures, symbols, and imagery, he remains a popular speaker at churches, temples, and other religious centers in the area. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Dr. Stephen Sinclair, and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 21st day of June 2022.
I had two wonderful deans, John Steele and of course Barbara Hubbard. And without their support, encouragement, and their understanding that what we do in the classroom is a ministry, we have students who have great needs of all different kinds, and I saw my responsibility to really help fulfill what is mentioned on the crest of the college, lux et veritas, light and truth. And it's our responsibility, I consider it to be my responsibility, to help the students to understand that people want that. They want to know the light, they want to be illumined, they want to know the truth, engage the truth, and to be civil in that process of discovering the truth in the classroom. One of my students, as Houston Smith said, Houston Smith, many of you know, was a great leader in the development of teaching of world religions. I tried to follow his model. He said that the purpose of, that he considered his purpose to be, as he taught, world religions and philosophy, to help the students to realize that even though this world that we walk around in and where we bump into other people and things and look at this world that our senses give to us, that they need to realize there's something more. There's something more than just accumulating stuff for own personal advantage, but there is truth to be found, truth to be encouraged, love to be followed, and do that in every aspect of their lives. So I appreciate the college. One of the first experiences I had outside of the college was when I heard someone who worked at the college complaining about what he had to do. And I was thinking, we need to be thankful for having this opportunity to work with people like you here, work with the deans that I had, the staff that, the faculty that I worked with, and the staff on our campus, our wonderful Seminole campus. So I'm thankful for the opportunity, for what God has given to me, to minister with you, to help these students to know what really life is all about. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and I appreciate this, Dr. Williams.
Excellent.[927.43][927.43](Applause). Thank you so much.
Next, we have our St. Pete College spotlights. Dr. Leowe Troth, I believe, has our first presentation.
Good morning, Chair Kidwell, Trustees, President Williams. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Emmanuel Hernandez Augusto, who joins St. Petersburg College on June 13th as the new dean of the College of Business. His office will be at the Downtown Center. Dr. Hernandez has a doctorate in Business Administration with a specialization in management. He joins us from Gulf Coast State College, where he was an associate professor and program manager for entrepreneurship. Previously, he served as Associate Dean and Program Chair at M.G. Mendez University in Puerto Rico. He enjoys hiking with his wife, trips to the beach with his two kids, and in spare time, he likes to play chess and indoor volleyball, which I'm looking forward to doing one-on-one and three-on-three with.[1003.25][1003.25](Laughter). Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees, and good morning. Thank you for allowing me to be part of the SPC family. Been learning a great deal about all that the staff and faculty do, and looking forward to meeting each one of you and getting to know the community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.[1024.13][1024.13](Applause).
All right. Next, we will have Dr. Gretchen Mullins Sawiki.
Hello.
Welcome aboard. So she has been, I think, a college president (laugh) and has done a lot of work in the grants area. So I'm going to read on behalf of Jessie, who could not be here today. She has enjoyed a career in higher education that spans two decades, which has included researching and writing grant proposals, leading and PI implementations, and grant management. I shared that she has been a college president of NHTI Concord's Community College in New Hampshire, and is president at a community college of Allegheny County in Pittsburgh. So she's in the Sunshine State now. She is a prolific grant writer and has helped to secure several grants, including the FIPSI Grant, two National Science Foundation Grants, and many local grants focused on student retention and academic program support. She's earned a PhD from the University of Toronto in English Literature, and it's a pleasure for us to have her here as our Director of Grants.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Chair Kidwell, members of the board, President Williams, I am absolutely thrilled to be here at SPC. I've already worked with many of the colleagues behind me, and we have submitted grants, we've been writing proposals in order to, of course, meet the strategic plans of SPC. So I just want to say I'm thrilled to be here. It's an honor to be here, and thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.[1131.65][1131.65](Applause). Next, we will have Amal Dewaliwal. Amal is our new Government Relations Director, replacing Eric Eddy. He has huge stilettos to fill.[1146.92][1146.92](Laughter). Eric's done a great job. Amal comes with a burst of energy and ready to rock and roll. Day one, he was already, who should he call and what should he be doing? Previously, Amal served as the Public and Legislative Affairs Coordinator for Florida Attorney General Ashley Moody. His responsibilities included event planning and advancing, as well as helping develop the agency's strategy and passing their legislative priorities, which is exactly what we need Amal to do here at St. Petersburg College. He interned in Washington DC with US Congressman Gus Villaracas, and has done a lot with Senator Danny Burgess and others. The thing that really got me was he also worked with Adam Goodman. And those of you who know Adam, he helped me with the transition plan when I became president, and looking at what we need to do better, quicker, and faster. And so Amal is very used to the fast pace. I've seen him in action in rooms with legislators last week, and he did a great job. Welcome aboard, Amal. Please say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, and board members. It's a tremendous privilege to be standing before you all this morning. As Dr. Williams said, I've definitely hit the ground running. I was honored to see the passing of the gavel to Dr. Williams to become the Chairwoman of the Council of Florida College Presidents, and I can't wait to take that task on with you. To the board members, I look forward to exceeding your expectations, not only for myself that you have set for me, but this role. It's going to be an awesome, awesome journey, and I cannot wait. So go Titans, and after that win last night, go Bolts.[1252.71][1252.71](Laughter).[1253.71][1253.71](Applause).
Moving along onto the comments section, I would like to say I had a fantastic time with many of you in the St. Pete College family at the induction of our own Dr. Williams into the Tampa Bay Business Hall of Fame. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Yes. So it was fantastic night. We had two tables. I mean, there are over 1,000 people. Dr. Williams went last. It was a long night, but her speech, as she always does, was amazing. I was very proud to be sitting there with many of you. A lot of jokes and conversation, and it was a great night to get to know people. Trustee Butz was there as well. I got to meet his wife, sat next to her all night. We just had a really good time, and it was all because Dr. Williams got inducted into the Hall of Fame. So that's my main takeaway for the... I know if I miss something, I've got plenty of trustees that are going to step in, but that was the main thing, and it was fantastic. And again, we had two tables there in support, and Dr. Williams acknowledged us, and it was just really a good night. I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I would echo that, and the energy from the St. Petersburg College family that was there was incredible, and definitely noted by everybody else in the room, and extremely proud of your accomplishments and what you've done for this community. So congratulations. It was a great night.
So I'm probably missing something, but Trustee Stone Cypher and Trustee Cole may have something.
No. Just wanted to welcome the new folks on board. Amal, right?
Yes.
I said that right? University of Florida Gator, so we expect great things from that as well. So welcome, and very excited for the energy that you all will bring. So looking forward to meeting you all and spending some time.
And I'm going to get it wrong, but you were just elected president. Can you say what it is so that I don't mess it up?
Right. So I have the privilege of being the Chair of the Council of Presidents. I have the privilege of being the Chair of the Council of Presidents for the Florida College System. And I think it's going to be a different year than we had this past year, but it's going to be a great year for SPC's name to be all over the place, and to have a chance to represent the Great 28. That's really what it's about, and so for me, it's a privilege. So, thank you.
All right. Do you have any other comments?
I do. I do want to say how grateful I am to our governor for approving our budget request for the college. We received everything and some, way more than we anticipated. And I also want to specifically publicly thank Speaker Chris Sprouse. Without his support and advocacy for us, we would not be here. And so I want to make sure it's on the record that I see him, and I appreciate him, and I value him, and recognize the advocacy and his support of St. Petersburg College. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. I just wanted to say that because it's just so important that, for the first time since I can remember, we received everything we wanted and some. And so that will never happen again, probably, but thanks to Speaker Sprouse for that. We have so much that has happened since the last time we met, and so many of the St. Petersburg College leaders, and that's everyone, no matter your position, you're a leader at the institution, they've done so much, and I know I'm going to miss some things, but I am going to share some really good stuff that's been happening. One, our very own Wayne Kruger, Executive Director of Financial Aid Operations, received the FAFSA, at the FAFSA Conference with the Florida Association of Student Financial Aid and Administrators, one of their highest honors, and it is the Distinguished Service Award. Wayne received this because it's given to those who have made significant contributions to the financial aid community at the national, regional, and state levels, which he has certainly done. So congratulations, Wayne. Next, Paul Wilborn, SPC's Executive Director of the Palladium, released his second novel called Florida Hustle. His first book was Cigar City and won the 2019 Florida Book Awards Gold Medal for Fiction. You didn't know Paul was a writer. Kim Kirchman, SPC Professor of Ceramics and Design at the Clearwater Campus, is part of a two-person exhibition at Gallery 114 located at the HCC Ebor Campus. Very proud of her. Her exhibit will be available through June 23rd. And it exhibits, it features recent functional and decorative ceramic objects that she has done. Kevin Grass, SPC Professor of Drawing and Painting, recently published a six-page article called "The Art of Collaboration" in the International Artists Magazine. Media highlight, Program Coordinator Steve Marshall and SPC student Joelle Hicks were interviewed about the Florida African-American Male Experience Program. Very proud of that. Bay News Nine featured the Line Worker Program in their hurricane season. That was a big deal. Tampa Bay Newspaper published in the Weekly Beacon a series on professional women in Pinellas County, and Christine Ren Carter, SPC's Executive Director of LIPA, was featured. Academic spotlight, Frank Jerkovich was appointed to the Study Florida Board, and his presentation was accepted for the EDUSA Forum in DC in August. 20 students and three faculty, Professor Tricia Goram, Janet Madra Kovik, and Joanna Maza, just returned from a two-week veterinary technology study abroad in Zimbabwe. 11 students and one faculty with Professor Roxana Levine will be returning from a three-week Spanish language immersion. Dual enrollment, bringing in approximately $900,000 in new revenue due to scholarship legislation, which allowed SPC to request reimbursement for private and homeschool students. Jeez, guys, this is a lot. We received the Jack Kemp Transfer Award. A student who's going to Princeton took three honors courses while at SPC. We just got a lot here. I'm going to send this to the board, but a lot of our programs were reaccredited. Some of us actually received top awards for our accreditation, like our respiratory care, dental hygiene, and physical therapist programs. We've had a lot going there. So there's so much happening at SPC, and I'm very proud of the work that you are doing every day. Sometimes it feels like you're hidden in plain sight, but we see you and we feel the movements, and thank you for all that you are doing. Those who are here in the room and those who are joining us online, I will review the video later, thank you for all that you do. And that is my spotlight report.
Lot of good stuff happening here, as always. We are now at the public comments section of our meeting. The meeting is now open for public comments.
No cards.
Do we have any cards? Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak? Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak? Public comment period is closed. Moving on, we have review and approval of the minutes for our workshop in May, and the special meeting we had the following week. Is, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So, moved on both the workshop minutes and the May 26 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, monthly reports. Ms. Kanza, do we have, or do you have a report this month?
Good morning, Chair Kidwell, trustees, and Dr. Williams. On June 8, the college filed a notice with the Public Employees Relation Commission rejecting a report and recommendation from a special magistrate for our adjunct faculty union, which is SEIU. That rejection was provided to the board in accordance with Florida statutes, and we will be scheduling a public hearing to have both sides, both the college and the union, provide their position regarding the rejected recommendation.
Very good. Moving on to the strategic focus, we have a presentation on spring 2022 course success rates from Dr. Leo Traff.
Good morning again, Chair Kidwell, trustees, President Williams. Wanted to take this opportunity to review our student success from the spring semester. We always are looking at the pass rate of students in our class, so students who are earning As, Bs, and Cs in classes versus the overall As, Bs, Cs, Ds, Fs, withdrawals, incompletes that are never resolved, withdraw failures. This gives us a measure of how successful our faculty are, because it's not that we're lowering the bar, it's that our faculty are more successful in helping students achieve what they're trying to achieve in the classroom. And year over year, we have been improving in this regard. We usually look at for fall term, fall over fall, because, you know, the energy of fall is a little different than spring, and then for spring, we look term over term, how student success is going in spring term. And so, even though we've gone through a global pandemic, we have had a three-year run of increasing success in students passing classes in the spring term, and this is a good thing. This is, you know, this then leads to persistence. If they pass, if a student passes a class, they're more likely to stay with the college, more likely to continue with more classes, more likely to complete a degree or certificate, and get their career objective that they're hoping to achieve out of coming to St. Petersburg College. This does get embedded into multiple long-term goals or strategic plan, our overall success rate goal of getting over 80%, and also looking at how our students do in terms of overall student population versus different populations of students at the college. Looking at this contrast of overall student success versus success of students in different student populations, unfortunately, this spring, for the first time, our African-American male students did not, had a decline in their success rate. We've had several years of improvements in the success rate for African-American males. This spring, we had a decline. It did not erase the gains of last year, but our gains last year were over 6%, so we are still up from two years ago, but we are disappointed that we have not had as much success this spring in closing that gap as we have had in prior years. On the flip side, for Hispanic males, we actually have had continued improvement, and Hispanic male students now exceed the college average for student success in the classroom. So, that's a definite, a win for the college. That's something we will continue to do, because as we improve the success rate of one student population, we continue to focus on improving the success rate of all student populations. As we look into what's going on for African-American male students, our data show that at the upper level, for the baccalaureate degrees, they are doing quite well. The gap between African-American male students and other student demographic populations is very small. So, upper division, students who've been successful getting their associates are successful at the baccalaureate level. Overall, African-American male students are also more successful in face-to-face classes. All of our students are more successful in face-to-face classes, and the gap is smaller there. And interestingly, in traditional online classes, our asynchronous, some autonomy on studying on your own, our African-American male students are doing better in those types of classes. On the flip side, not doing as well in the live online sessions. And so, we are taking a look at seeing what's going on. That's our newer modality of instruction from the pandemic, the Zoom classes. And so, we're trying to figure out if it's an access to resources issue, if it's a timing issue, because there's real time involved for those classes, or what the issue is. The other big focus that we have, and this is kind of a larger focus for the whole college, is the course they're doing the worst in is ENC 1101, English Composition. This is actually a, one of our more challenging classes overall. Our students as a whole are doing better in math than in English at this point, and so, we continue to focus on this, the English Composition class, looking at how it's designed, how does it serve our students, and what we can do to improve. So, we're actually taking a hard dive on our, on this class and several others, where we have success rates that are not where we want them to be, and looking at how do we redesign these classes to be more successful for all students, and especially students that are being disproportionately impacted in their success rates. The one other bright piece I did want to share before we left this focus on different student demographics is African-American women's success rate is up. It had declined during the pandemic, and so, we're happy to see this turnaround. So, again, slightly mixed message. We're doing better for Hispanic men. We're doing better for African-American women, and we continue to focus on African-American men. We have several different initiatives besides the course redesign. The Helius Foundation has invested in the college, and so, we have more structured what is now our FAAM program for African-American male student success, so we have a more sustainable approach to serving those students. The one other piece I wanted to highlight is completions, and this is kind of foreshadowing my September report where I do the year in review. Spring semester, we had 2,293 students complete a degree or certificate. Those 2,293 students completed 2,460 degrees and certificates. So, sometimes students get two degrees at the same time, or sometimes they get a degree and a certificate at the same time, or sometimes they get two certificates at the same time. It continues to be, the Associate of Arts is our largest degree program, but then if you look at our workforce programs, the AS degree, the bachelor's degrees, and then the certificates and diplomas, those exceed the Associate of Arts overall, where it's roughly about 40% of our degree awards, and then workforce degrees and certificates are about 60% of our degrees and awards. Any questions on kind of our spring semester?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chair. On the English Composition, what are the results of those that took, there's a prep course correct or a developmental course before they actually take the class if needed and if they choose to take it? Is that, is that having a significant impact on the success rates of those who are then going on to the actual English Composition class?
I can get you specifics on that particular issue. The student, the SLS program is more geared for college overall, so it's not geared necessarily for one particular class, but I can get you some data on how it's impacting that one particular class.
I think what trustee Stonecifer is trying to figure out, if a student took developmental Comp English, are they more successful when they get to Comp 1? There's two things. One, most students don't have to do developmental courses anymore.
Right.
They graduated from a Florida high school from 2007 on, so many of our students are not having to take the developmental English reading and writing.
Right, it's their choice.
And they jump right into Comp 1, or they jump right into math, and may not do as well. So, I think we can break it down with those who had to do DevEd and those who didn't to see if the success rates are different.
Sorry, I was misunderstanding the question. Yeah, for DevEd, the challenge is the numbers are really small, so it's hard to make a generalization from the few number of students who actually take that course. Other questions on spring semester? Thank you all. Yes.
Sorry, I don't really have a question on spring semester specifically, but I wanted to go back to the black male students, and thank you. I'm thrilled with the increase in the Hispanic male gap, but I was curious if we've looked at, I know we have, but our recruitment of our first-time-in-college students and where these male students who are the first time in college in these DevEds are relative to their academic career. Are they straight out of high school? Are they returning students? Are they actively recruited? Are they just walking in and signing up for a class? Kind of some of those types of...
All of the above.
Right?
It's all of the above.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, ENC 1101 is going to be dual-enrolled high school students. It's going to be fresh out of high school students. It's going to be students who are in their late 20s, late 30s, late 40s. There's a slight trend that the older it is, a little bit more successful, and that has a lot to do with, you know, managing a family, managing a job, time management issues more than anything else.
Trustee Cole, I think you're really on to something that we need to look at, you know, the first-time-in-college African-American males and separate if they are the older males, if they had to do DevEd, if they did not, so we could really see where the hook is, you know, where are we losing them and not succeeding? And I think a part of the FAAM program will address that. We received that in April, February? Like, we just received...
Sounds about right.
Right. So, but I think we need to bring that back, because I think it's important for us to know, when you have such a gap, you know, what's going on. And so, I think you're spot on, and we'll bring that back.
Yeah. I mean, it's not surprising that the BSBA students are more successful than the other students.
Yeah.
But I'd be interested in looking a little bit deeper as to where are we missing? I mean, we had that huge discussion to trustee Stonecifer's point on DevEd, however many years ago, when the statute changed, and, you know, really, where is that recruitment effort, or if it includes the dual enrollment, or is it our high school students or right out of high school? But, you know, I think those would all be interesting.
And if the DevEd really helps...
Right.
Then how do we incentivize people to sign up since they're not forced to sign up, which I know we've talked about for years, but it always, I don't know, it always seems to go back there.
You know, our advisors do a good job letting students know academically where they really are and suggesting that they take the DevEd, but, you know, when it's optional, they don't. And I think that is a challenge across the state. It's not just the SPC issue, and more and more states are doing away with DevEd altogether, like, done, like you jump right in. And if you recall, when we were doing the college experience, everything was moving forward because of the DevEd, and as soon as that went away, the success rates went significantly down for our most encourageable students. So, it's one of those things we can suggest. We could offer to pay for it. They don't want, it's the timing. They want to jump into the college courses with their friends, and they don't, if they don't have to, they won't. I think that with the FAAM program, there's some opportunities for us to maybe bring in some additional support for them in the classes if they choose to take Comp 1, maybe having a support staff in the room with them. Those are some of the things that other colleges are doing to kind of help boost them up quicker and help them understand. So, with Comp 1, we have some work to do because it's not just for African-American males. I think Comp 1 altogether as a gatekeeper course is a course that we need to look at how we're teaching and what we're doing for everyone.
On the funding side of the DevEd, it just might be interesting to really parse down on, is it the dollars? Because I know a few years ago, that was the issue, why did they want to spend their limited education dollars on a class that basically doesn't count for anything? So, you know, what types of grants we could seek, and foundation support, and other types of opportunities to underwrite those costs. And I appreciate that it's the time, because...
It's time.
Once you make that commitment to go back to school, to have it delayed is significant, but it's constantly something we all talk about.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Laura. All about the budget.
Keep that momentum going. We just talked about it a minute ago. Good morning, Chair Tiwo, both trustee and Dr. Williams. I would like to thank Laura for the opportunity to be here today. As Dr. Williams mentioned early on, Governor DeSantis signed the fiscal year 2023 budget. SPC had a successful legislative budget season. I would like to thank the Speaker of the Florida, the House of Representatives, Chris Sprouse for his support, the board, who advocated locally in Tallahassee, the SPC community, Eddie Eddy, the former Governor Relation Director and Capital City for the clear guidance during the legislative season. The proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2023 is $164 million, which include a 5.7 million decrease in student tuition and fee, or a negative 10%. When you look at the state funding, we have an increase of about 14%, about $11.2 million. When you look at all the revenues, we have a 71% increase, and this is due to the loss of revenue recovery. When you look at the fund transferring, we have about 11% increase, $150,000. And when you look at the transfer in pursuant to Florida statute, you have $8.1 million. This $8.1 million include the $4.7 million for the spending plan that we brought to the board last September of 2021 and got approved. It also include $2 million for the purchase order rollover and other restricted fund. The total revenue increase for the fiscal year 2023 is about 13% or $18.3 million. Have any question about the revenue side? Before I move into the next section, I do want to remind you something. When Dr. Williams became president, the idea was to realign our resources to the strategic pillar. If you recall, for the last couple of years, we've been having a strategic movement to reimagine SPC. I would like to remind you too that for the health of the college, we brought to you the primary reserve ratio, which was 10 at 51%, and the industry is 40%. The next step for SPC is to invest in our assets in order to maximize our productivity and enhance efficiency. For the fiscal year 2023, budget for expenses is $164 million. Out of the $164 million, 68% is allocated to instruction, public service, academic support, and student support. 32% is allocated to instructional support, physical planning, operation, and maintenance, student financial assistance, and contingency. After physical plan assets, our personnel are the second-largest asset of the institution. Budget expenses for the fiscal year '22 are 18.3 million higher than the fiscal year '21-'22, and this is due to the fact that we are including a potential investment of about $10 million from the compensation study to recruit and retain employees. This is based on the recommendation for the compensation and classification study. That is an $826,000 potential increase for the Florida retirement system. We have about $450,000 increase in health insurance. There is also the fund from the transferring, which is $4.7 million that you saw in the revenue, that is also in the spend side. When you look at the public safety appropriation, we received $955,000. There is a $2 million for the purchase order rollover. There is $660,000 transfer for Tarpun Springs Warforce Incubator, and there is also $1.4 million for other restricted funds. Do you got any question about the spend side? All right. Let's move into the capital ally. When you look at the capital ally fund, we receive for this year $47.5 million for the third maintenance, and $5 million for the Tarpun Springs, the third maintenance. The fiscal year 2023 also include a $60.7 million for the capital improvement fee. Now, keep in mind that there is a decline of about $1.7 million of the capital improvement fee from last year due to the declining enrollment. This revenue also include the Tarpun Springs Warforce Incubator for $6.2 million, and our total funding available for this year is $76.4 million. Any question about the We are in track to pay our bond by 2030. Our construction bond payment is about $2.7 million. For major construction project, you got $6.5 million. $6.2 million is designated to the Tarpun Springs Warforce Incubator. There is $250,000 for encumbrance for the BTEC project. When you look at the college... When you look at the college-wide infrastructure renovation, we got 56.9 million. 47.5 million is for the deferred maintenance. That is $5 million for the deferred maintenance at Tarpun Spring Warforce, and there is also 4.4 million for the infrastructure renovation of campus-wide. Keep in mind the facility is working along with the master planning of how to make use of those funds. When you look at the contingency, we got 7.2 million. Assistant project misalignment, you got 2.2 million. Out of the 2.2 million, that is 1.4 million that is allocated to all the campuses to address their needs. When you look at internal construction personnel, that is $959,000. Got any question about the capital outlay? Just for the record, I would like to remind you that this budget hasn't been constructed today. For those of you that might see it online and looking at the Board of Trustees may be not asking question, it's because we worked with the entire slate since July 1st of last year. We try to keep informed and make sure that we are clear and precise in all the information that we put outside. At this point, I would like to ask your approval to adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 operating budget, which include the 1.5 million for the auxiliary fund transferring, $660,000 transfer out for Tarpun Spring Warforce incubator, $155,000 transfer out for the spending plan, and the fiscal year 2022-23 capital outlay fund.
Any discussion?
I just want to echo what Dr. Laura said. I want to thank everyone for the time that you've spent speaking with each one of us individually and keeping us up to date with everything that's going on and the changes that were happening in real time over the last six months as we've been developing this in more detail. And yeah, it sounds like we're quiet up here, but it's because we've been through this a lot. But thank you. Hector.
Absolutely. I echo those sentiments. Thank you for everybody's hard work. Can we get a motion to approve?
Do we need two motions or can we do it in one?
I think we do it in one.
Okay, move approval of the 2022-23 operating fund budget and the 2022-23 capital outlay fund budget.
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget passes.
Thank you. I would like to thank you for your leadership, the budget department team, and the entire SPC family for the support during this budget planning season, and all of you that meet with me on a daily basis. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, man. Thank you, Dr. Laura. We are now on to the consent agenda. The trustee would like to make a motion to approve the entire consent agenda. No?
Mr. Chair, may I please? I just want to make sure the trustees know that the consent agenda also includes asking for permission to start Phase One of the facility plan and to deem those properties outlined in there not usable for educational purposes. And I just want to make sure you knew that. I didn't want to let that slide by. If you vote on it all at once, I just want to make sure you knew about that, and that's a part of the workshop we had in the individual meetings that we.
And that's not locking us into anything. This is.
No, you're giving me permission to do Step One, giving us permission to let the state know those properties are not needed for educational purposes. No sale, no leases, nothing would happen. At this point, it's just getting started.
I'm excited to get it started.
It is urgent that we get moving.
And a motion to approve.
I can't motion, but.
I have to talk to trustee Stonecifer.
Yeah, a motion to approve the consent agenda is one item.
Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. The board has provided informational reports, so I don't think there's anything to do there On the president's evaluation or is that, that's informational?
Well, it's in front of you. I believe you have a copy of the combined.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, on the evaluation, first of all, I express my apologies to Rebecca and to the board because my evaluation came in after she prepared this, so I apologize for that. I was at a couple hearings that had my evaluation in my bag with me the whole time and not scanned into her. So, but I, I think we were all pretty consistent in our responses with Dr. Williams. As always, the past five years has been a whirlwind. I think one thing that stands out to me is about our first Zoom call when the world shut down in March of 2020. She looked at me when we were all getting used to speaking on, in that type of technology, and she said, "Trustee Cole, I learned early on never to waste a crisis, and we're going to figure out how to make this work." And I, and she certainly has the, we've said this so many times to the college family, but I just continue to be impressed over the past two years, the pivot that the college did, the budgeting, the financial stewardship, the faculty, and accommodating all of the different types of learning, the advocacy in Tallahassee with the finances and how to utilize the ARPA funding and HARPA funding and CARESAC funding and everything else that goes on. So I just want to say thank you for that. I think, you know, the evaluation is here, but I just wanted to open with that. So thank you.
We can count your answers.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Can I add to that, Chair Kidwell?
Yes.
I think to Katie, thank you for saying that. I think it's, what I think I've been most excited about is Dr. Williams' ability to focus on the here and now, of course, but also looking five and 10 years into the future and making sure that we, as an institution, stay ahead of the curve as much as possible, anticipating some of the changes that may come, not knowing what those will be, but hopefully being ready and being positioned to really take advantage of whatever happens and be set for success long into the future, not just right now. It's really easy to make decisions that I think make people happy and comfortable in the moment, but it's the hard decisions that will make us a better place in the future that really is the show of leadership. And speaking of that leadership, I think we're also very proud as a board that you have taken on, while we're doing all this here locally, you've taken on such a large leadership role statewide. You've always been a part of that, but especially last year, and now going into your role as chair for all 28 of the state colleges. These are big things. This is a huge time commitment, and I know, I know your mind is always racing because there's always something to think about. And so I think our encouragement, and from what I heard from a few of the trustees and you, is to also remember to take some time for yourself, please, because we want to preserve your energy as much as we can for many years to come. But thank you for everything.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Very well stated. You guys are great. Any other comments there? Thank you for all you do. You're a great advocate.
I think this would be the appropriate time, but as you all know, Dr. Williams is on a contract, and the contract between the board and Dr. Williams sets her salary, I would suggest, based on her performance, the financial position of the college, that the board consider an increase in her annual compensation and her deferred comp. Dr. Williams and I talked about, you know, what the, last year, the board was presented with the salary, or two years ago, with a salary study, and St. Pete College has continued to be on the lower scale of the state colleges in Florida. At the time, the board wasn't comfortable making large adjustments based on the financial status of the institution, but I feel like based on all of the hard work of everyone here, led by Dr. Williams, now is the time. And I'd suggest, and it still is very modest, perhaps a 4% raise to, in her compensation and increasing her deferred comp as well. I think right now you're at 45,000.
55.
55 for deferred comp, so I'd suggest increasing that to 65,000.
Do we need to take this up?
Yes.
Katie, can you put that into a motion? I agree unless there's discussion and anyone has.
Sure, we can. I can move to provide Dr. Williams a 4% raise and increase deferred comp to 65,000 and amend her contract accordingly.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you very much, trustee Cole.
Thank you.
For bringing that up. Very good. There are no proposed changes to the rules manual, so we're on to the president's report.
I definitely want to thank the board of trustees because everything that we've been able to do this year has also been with your guidance. You've taken my phone calls, my text messages, my emails, some of you, my constant calls, and that means a lot to know that when I call, I can catch you and you'll respond through everything that happens. And what we've done legislatively this year as a team, trustee Butts and trustee Cole, I called you guys all the time to stand in the gap, to help us through different things, and I appreciate that because it means a lot to a college president to know that she can reach her trustees, and that you guys have given me good feedback. Some of it I liked, some of it I didn't, but that's a part of it. And you learn to move forward and also to understand other perspectives. It's not always that Tanja's right. So thank you for doing that because it's important. It's important that you do that for me. Legislatively, this year has been magical, and not just for St. Pete College, but for the state colleges as a whole. We have some great opportunities to continue moving forward. It's up to us. And this is not the time for us to celebrate so much that we pull back on the throttle. This is the time where you step your game up and get ready for the next challenge. So for us legislatively next year, there's two things that I'm really focusing hard on. One would be leveraging funding for our health programs to expand what we're doing to ensure that the cost for instruction is covered, because as you know, our health programs never pay for themselves, and so we have to do something different than what we've done. Building those partnerships with hospitals to help them have skin in the game, to help us offset some of the costs is going to be critical. The second is to seek more funding to make sure that we can bring on new programs. We cannot live off of what we have. If we do not bring on new programs and retrofit the programs that we have to be current with business and industry standards, we will not be meaningful to this community. So legislatively, I am pushing hard for opportunities of policy and funding that is going to help us bring the right programs to St. Petersburg College, offered in the right way, the right modality, and ensuring that our instructors have the tools that they need to be relevant and to make sure that we're putting out a good product on the street. If we do not do that as an institution, we will not be relevant. And you know, we're the Titans, and we're going to be in the mix. We're going to be above the mixed. And so legislatively, Amal, we're going to need to build more partnerships with our health program, our health providers, and we need to really dig deep into what we're offering and making sure we bring back funding to help us strengthen that. Second, we need funding to help us build programs and get the equipment we need to offer them. And so from where I sit, I'll be working with our board over the next couple of weeks to codify our legislative position, and then looking at, Amal, how we can align that with the right legislators to get it moving. And then with the Florida college system, we're building a five-year legislative plan so that we're not starting over every year, because if the college system is strong, SPC receives funding and support as well. We're a part of that. We're, we teeter between being number six and number seven in size. We teeter back and forth with HCC. The important part is that our completion rates are above board, that we get students to the finish line and across the stage. So we're going to be focusing on that. It's going to be painful because to bring change, we have to change. And so I will be pushing hard for that for the Florida college system as well as St. Petersburg College. It's hard to be the chair and push for the system if the college that she chairs or works at does not do it. So we've got to be the best at it. And so there's going to need to be some movement there for us to get there, some creative thinking and ways to say yes instead of no. That's how we've always done it. So we know that good organizations don't do the things they've done even last year. Higher Ed is a hard pivot. They take a while to turn the corner, but being that we are the, I'm the chair of the Florida college system, we got to get moving. I can't improve that or work with them, and we're not doing our part. And so I'll be coming to a campus near you or online so that we can get our plans straight. And to the board, we'll be working with you on our legislative ass to make sure that it also meets our needs and the goals that we've set forth, especially for economic mobility. Our short-term rapid credential programs are yielding that. I think that the collegiate high school we're about to embark upon is going to be a game changer. I think it's going to be great. So we have some good opportunities to move forward, so let's get it going. And I'm ready. I know you're ready, and the college has never been in a better position to bring about effective change. And so we're ready for it. I'm looking forward to it. And thank you so much for being so generous this year. I appreciate that. That's my report.
Very good. Our next meeting will be August 16th, right here. This meeting is adjourned. And we're opening up the meeting for the governing board of the St. Pete Collegiate High Schools. Ms. Metz.
Good morning, Chair Kidwell, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm Star Lametz, the Associate Vice President of Collegiate High Schools. I'd like to thank our members of the board and Dr. Williams for attending our high school graduation ceremonies. You honored our scholars, their families, and our team, and we are very grateful for your continued support. This morning, I appreciate the opportunity to bring forth a consent agenda item, or a consent agenda, an update on our new STEM collegiate high school, our proposed budgets for all three collegiate high schools, and highlights of the 21-22 school year. On the consent agenda, the first item is the mental health opt-in plans. By opting into the district's mental health plan, it provides not only professional development and resources for our staff, but additional resources for our students to meet their mental health needs and well-being. Our proposed academic calendar is for our ninth and 10th graders. Our juniors and seniors are fully dual-enrolled and follow the college calendar. And then the last item is an app that allows emergency management personnel to speak directly with our administrators in the event of a crisis situation. So I am respectfully requesting approval of the consent agenda. Do you have any questions for me?
Is it moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I am really delighted to give you an update on our new STEM collegiate high school at SPC's downtown center. This school is a replication of our other two schools. Our vision is the same. We cultivate successful learners and leaders, and many of our effective processes and practices will be implemented at this new school. What's unique about this location is the mission. So this school will allow students to earn a high school diploma, an associate in arts degree in computer information technology or data systems, two industry certifications, one in Excel and one in business soft skills. So we're really delighted that we can offer all of that to our students. For students who wish to continue their post-secondary ed. For students who wish to continue their post-secondary education after graduation, if they take one additional science college course, they will also earn their associate in arts degree. So our scholars at this campus, beginning with ninth graders, which is really exciting because we have the opportunity to really have them for all four years and give them that strong academic foundation. We've been able to lower our entrance criteria. It's just an unweighted GPA of 2.0 for our entering ninth graders, so really opening the door for some of our underserved student population. So we're very excited about that. So for our scholars that want to enter the workforce after graduation, they'll be well-equipped to do so. They will have an opportunity to hear from business leaders, have an internship, and have some relevant work experience. For those students who want to pursue additional post-secondary education, they can either stay right here at SPC, which we hope a large majority of them do, or for those that want the university experience, they'll be able to transfer to any Florida public university and continue their post-secondary education. The great thing is, is no matter what STEM career field they plan to pursue, they'll have a very strong technology foundation that will serve them well. I'm delighted to announce that our principal for the STEM collegiate high school is Ms. Raquel Hairston. She's been selected to serve. She has middle and high school experience. She has served as our wonderful principal at the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus. She's also served as an equity champion and a restorative practices facilitator for Pinellas County Schools, and she's currently pursuing her doctorate in educational leadership. So we're just thrilled to have her serve in this very important role. Because she is moving to our downtown center, Dr. Ian Call, who was the former curriculum specialist at our St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus and currently our principal of the Tarpon Springs Campus, is moving to that campus. He will provide stability there and make sure that that campus is strong and has exemplary leadership. And our Tarpon Springs principal position is advertised right now. We have internal and external candidates that we will be interviewing tomorrow, so we hope to make a recommendation to HR by the end of the week. So we feel as though all three collegiate high schools are going to have very strong leadership to lead us forward. As you know, the charter contract was approved in May. We are also interviewing for all of the positions at the new STEM collegiate high school this week, and all of the instructional materials have been ordered, including the presentation systems for all of our teachers, all of the laptops, the laptop carts, and the other resources for the classrooms. So we're right on pace in terms of our instructional materials and gearing up. In terms of safety, we will be on the third and fourth floor of the downtown campus. We have selected and hired our school guardian, who is our armed officer that is required by statute. He is going through the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office training. We also have two relief guardians, so each school has a guardian, and we have two backups in the event that one of our guardians needs to take a day off. We also had our security walkthrough with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department, and because of that, we have added swipe locks for every single door, additional cameras, an intercom system, radios, and the LED flashing alert systems for all of our students and staff. So we are very well-equipped to ensure a safe and nurturing learning environment for our scholars. As you know, we received the grant to fund this program in January, and we had to go through the application process, and then we had to start a little late for our recruitment. Normally, we start a recruitment of students in the fall, and by February, we have them all nestled in, and we have our numbers. So our estimated enrollment, we didn't quite hit our target, but I think in hindsight, it really is going to be very beneficial. We are planning on 75 ninth and 10th graders for a total student body of 75 students at our new STEM campus, and so this budget reflects the FEFP funding for those 75 students as well as the funding that we received for the grant, which will cover startup costs and a large majority of the operating costs for the first year. The nice thing about the smaller number of students, it allows everyone to make that transition for us to make some minor tweaks to the program because this is the first year that we're having ninth graders. So if you look at our total revenue, this is K-12 funding, you'll see for the FEFP, we have $467,000. We have Title II for professional development and Title IV, which provides additional resources for our students, for total funding of $471,533 for revenue. Next, if we take a look at our operating expenses, these are the operating expenses that will come out of our revenue. We have instructional cost. We have plant operations, and we have a total of $107,846 for our total personnel costs. We have professional development and workshops. We have our facility lease, and we have professional fees, which cover things such as our audit and our insurance. Continuing with operating expenses, the food is to provide lunch vouchers for Nature's Table for our students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. And so you can see our total current expense is $257,741. So our total budget expenditures are $365,587. You see the dual enrollment tuition and the contribution to offset that from the college, and we anticipate an ending fund balance or reserves of about $106,000. Are there any questions on the budget?
Ms. Metz, what's the, what'll be the ideal enrollment once we've been around for a few years and have established ourselves downtown?
After year three, we project our ideal enrollment will be 320 students, so 75 students at grades nine and 10, about 85 students at grades 11 and 12. That allows us to have the resources that we need to provide all of the extra things that we like to provide for our students. Our goal is to not have any barriers to their learning, but then also still keep that safe and nurturing learning environment where we know every student by name and we really build those relationships with them so they feel connected to the collegiate high school and to SPC.
Anybody else?
May I respectfully request approval of the budget?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's now my pleasure to introduce Dr. Ian Call, the principal of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School North Pinellas on the Tarpon Springs Campus.
Good morning, Chair Kidwell, Board of Trustees members, Dr. Williams. I'm excited to be here, chair review of our budget and also our accomplishments from the past year. For the SPC HSNP budget this year, the first slide shows our revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year, which is made up of our FTE K-12 funding, capital outlay, Title II, and Title IV allocations. Our total revenue for this fiscal year will be $1839,166. This slide shows expected operating expenses, including our personnel costs, our cost for textbooks, and our cost of the lease. For this school year, we'll be increasing our academic and guidance support for students by hiring a teacher on special assignment and a school counselor. We'll be using our K-12 FTE funding, Pinellas County referendum funding, and COVID relief funding to pay for these positions. This slide is a continuation of our operating expenses, includes our cost for student lunches and the cost of the office, including printing and supplies. Our total expenses for the upcoming year are $1,587,046. The SPC HSNP fund balance is projected to be $176,450. We were able to increase the fund balance due to receiving capital outlay funds, COVID relief funds, increases in per pupil funding from the state, and Pinellas County referendum funds. Are there any questions regarding the budget?
Just one. What, what's the, if you go back to the personnel costs, the temporary nonrecurring, it was about $52,000 last year and it's 14 this year. What's the difference there?
So during the pandemic, we hired an OPS teacher to help support students to, you know, because they weren't as prepared as they were, so we hired that through temporary OPS funding. That position will be going away, and we'll be hiring the two new positions for it.
Got it.
That's the difference.
Good.
Okay. I respectfully ask for board approval for the fiscal year 2022-2023 SPC HSNP budget.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget passes.
Thank you very much. So for our highlights for this year, so Ms. Siegel and our art club started the mural and butterfly garden behind the cafe on the Tarpon Springs Campus. That picture on the bottom right is our new butterfly garden, and we only need to complete the walkway, so if you can see in the middle, we're going to have a nice walkway so the students can go through and enjoy the butterflies, and we're excited to say we actually have butterflies. So it's nice to plant those, and hopefully the butterflies show up, they show up, so we have butterflies. Under the leadership of Mr. Robinson, SPC HSNP has also started our Muse publication to highlight the amazing talents of our students. So each one of the board members and Dr. Williams has a copy of Muse right there, and so Ms. Robinson's done a great job of showcasing all the various talents that our students have in that publication. We have a national champion, which is very exciting. Macy Park won the IQ Foil Junior National Championship. If you're wondering what IQ Foil is, it's windsurfing, but they go in the air. That's the way they explain that to me. There's a picture of Macy, actually. That was her winning the national championship, so that's exciting. The senior class in our PTSA did an amazing job with our very first prom. Even though we've been around for three years, this is our first chance to have an actual prom, and there's the students dancing, enjoying prom at the Countryside Country Club. Our students have continued to take part in service projects, including beach and park cleanups, the Tarpon Springs Triathlon, and Keep Pinellas Beautiful. And our seniors gave over 10,800 hours of service to their communities, so we're very proud of what they've done in their communities and all the public service that they've been able to accomplish. This year, we were able to celebrate our first graduating class of students that started as sophomores, so that was a very special for us, special moment, because those students came to us as the school was brand new, took a chance on us, and for us to celebrate their accomplishments was a special moment for us. Our students have continued to excel in their college classes. We've had our very first national finalist, Kai Rubach, in the bottom right there. Our success rate, our college success rate, was over 90% in both the fall term and spring term, and 46 of our 76 graduates had a GPA above 4.0, so we're very excited about all of their accomplishments. So I thank you, and now I return the presentation over to Ms. Hairston.
Good morning, Chair Kidwell, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm glad to be with you today to present the budget for the Gibbs Campus and to share a few highlights, and I'm super excited to be moving to the downtown center. There's a lot of great things in store, and I'm excited to serve as a leader at that position. Slide number one. This slide is for the revenue projection that includes K-12 funding, Title II, and Title IV and capital outlay. The FEFP funding is $1.9 million, capital outlay is $110,000. You see Title II and Title IV. Our total funding source equal a little over $2 million. Slide two, this includes additional operating expenses for personnel cost. That is a little over $1.1 million. That includes instructional, administrative support, plant operations, and temporary nonrecurring. If you take a look at our current expenses, that includes professional development, textbooks, instructional materials, computer leases, facilities lease, professional services, and fees. And on the next slide, we continue with our operating costs for our insurance, for our student lunches, office supplies and equipment, and our printing charges for a total current expense cost of $537,000. Our capital spending is $1.7 million. You see our dual enrollment offset of $450,000, and you see the ending fund balance of $2.5 million. We've increased our ending balance by over $900,000 because of COVID-related funding and the referendum. Are there any questions on our budget? We're sitting in a really nice place. May I please have the budget approved for the '22-'23 school year?
May the approval of the budget be approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget passes.
Thank you. Like everyone else, we've really enjoyed getting back to a sense of normalcy with our students, getting a chance to enjoy our clubs and our activities. We're excited to announce Emily Pascal, one of our scholars, attended a scholarship to Harvard Summer Institute. We're equally excited that two of our students placed first place in the Stock Market Challenge for the '21-'22 school year, beating out 757 other teams. Six of our scholars won first place in the PCTA Reflections Contest, and they were entered into the state. 59% of our students have a GPA of 4.0 or higher, and we anticipate our AA graduation rate of 94% after this summer term. NICE ranked our school number one best high school in Tampa Bay, number two of 148 best charter high schools in Florida, and number 18 of 693 best public high schools in the state of Florida. 43% of our scholars graduated summa cum laude, and 13% graduated Bangda. Our seniors completed over 13 hours of community service, and we continue to enjoy social events, clubs, and other activities. It's been my honor to serve as principal of the Gibbs County, Gibbs Campus Collegiate High School, and I'm excited. Thank you.
That's great.
Are there any questions?
Can you please leave the name of the two students who own the stock market?
I will absolutely, I will absolutely send that over. You're welcome.
Thank you all.
I have a couple of questions, and I apologize if I should have asked Ms. Metz, but the downtown campus, I'm assuming that the school starts in August, in the meantime, that space that they're going to be occupying, how is that used now, and is there any disruption? How do we kind of overcome that or adjust things?
So I've been working with our wonderful team that helps us with the decorating and, of course, Provost Carver as well. So the downtown campus is utilized more in the late afternoon or evening hours, so we're delighted that we can utilize the space, and then they may use our classrooms at night for some of their, for some of the college classes as needed. We'll also be utilizing the beautiful Academic Resource Learning Center down there that will also be used by the college. And I met with Chad, Chad Marin, who's in charge of the Innovation Lab, and we're trying to create a virtual reality lab down there that will be utilized both by our STEM students and the college students to really put in some exciting innovation into, into that campus. So we all love to collaborate. We work well. We've already got a great partnership going, and we've been so warmly welcomed to the downtown campus, so we're looking forward to that. Also with American stage there, we're hoping that some of our students in the Palladium will have an opportunity to, they love the arts and have an opportunity to have, attend some presentations or some, some programs that are going on, or maybe have some guest speakers come in and enhance the arts there as well. So we don't anticipate a problem in terms of space.
Great. And final question, if I may. Seventy-five students, how many instructors or teachers do you anticipate having to start?
So we have lowered our numbers because we didn't heat, hit our enrollment, so we will have our principal. We will have five faculty. We will have a data management technician who does all of the data entry. We will have our administrative specialist, and we will have our guardians. So we will have a little bit of a skeleton crew, but it's plenty for the number of students that we have.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've heard exceptional things about Dr. Carver's skills at making things look pretty. I've seen his Jeep, so I'm sure it'll be. I'll take it.
This meeting is adjourned.